I don't know, you know, we can't, other than to say if you're allowed to do it and if this can happen, we don't want razor wire, we want a wooden fence around it. I mean, we can't do much more than that until we know if you're allowed to do this. If you have to come, if you are a utility, you may not even have to come to the planning board. So I don't know, you know, and then there was the whole issue, it's two pieces, and this is an undeveloped piece, we want to put an accessory structure on an undeveloped piece of property. There's a lot of stuff in the code that has to be determined by the village attorney and the zoning enforcement officer. He gave us some guidance. So what we can really talk about is at the next meeting, but we need to be sure what this is. We've never had any guidance before.
Did they give any indication when they'd next be meeting, just so we're kind of in the loop of, you know, when we might have a decision?
Tentatively October 3rd.
The next meeting is October 3rd, and I hope that's when they would tell us if you even have to come. I don't know. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a zoning enforcement officer. We are allowed to do what's in the code, and this is not even in the code. So they have to make a determination about what a fiber hub is.
The sort of property use issue is notwithstanding, and as I said the last time we were here, I am more than happy to make any adjustments to the aesthetics, you know, of that, and that's notwithstanding. I will say to the question of the utility, and I'm trying to think of the most respectful way to say this, it ultimately just isn't up to the village, the town, or the state makes a determination on whether you're a seaman or not.
I went through that with a cell tower at the fairground. They said, "We'll come to you as a courtesy, and we don't have to come to you because we're a utility," so I don't know.
And I honestly don't mean it that way. I believe we do have to come to you as a matter of just good conduct.
Well, they did too.
But the actual realization about whether or not we are a utility, it's not a decision that is made locally. It is an authority granted by the 1996 Telecom Act, which I helped write. And it's granted to the state, and the state took us through a very extensive process, and granted us that authority well over a year ago, and this is the fourth or fifth one of these that we have done. And I just want to make sure that that is, you know, and we have a public utility.
So just open the meeting, Justin, then we can have a chat, because you're already turned, but...
I don't know how much you want to chat, Mr. Chair, because without the board's legal counsel here, you should just...
So that's where we stand. You know, it may be that you're a utility, and you can just, you know, come to us and we'll tell you that the structure you're going to build, if we don't want chain link fence and razor wire on it, you can find other ways to protect it, they're more attractive than that, you know, planting some plantings in front of it and stuff like that. But that's about all that we would do. If you're not a utility, if you are a utility, not a utility, if there's this issue of zoning where you're on another piece of, you know, you're on an undeveloped parcel, there's two parcels, 187th Market Street.
I'll be here when your time comes.
We really need to have the zoning enforcement officer and the attorney, or at least an opinion from them as to how we should proceed, because it's not...
And we're not here to be competitive in any way.
No, no, no.
If we were on the agenda, we showed up just to make sure we could answer any questions. And I can tell you, 30 years of doing this, I've never put razor wire on anything ever.
No.
So you can rest assured that that is not our concern.
So they just want to build this fiber hub with a backup generator at 187 in the back of the parking lot. But it's on the other side, it's a two-parcel property, so it's on the undeveloped side. There's this stuff, you shouldn't have accessory buildings on an undeveloped piece of land, whether they're a utility, and they're allowed to do it by state order, and we shouldn't even be talking about it. We need an opinion from Dave and Justin, and they're not ready. So Ryan made the phone call to them. So that's all we can say about it, you know, until we, you know, have some opinion and we could rule on this on the 3rd of October.
Well, we can talk about the aesthetics, not just the use.
Yeah.
So they could come prepared for the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, they know, we mentioned this at the last meeting, that we'd like to have some, you know, plantings or fences, security fence, but not electrified chain link barbed wire fence, you know. So you certainly have the right to protect your property.
They have some examples from these type of installations at other sites in other towns, where they changed the aesthetics to some times, they were going to bring some of those examples in.
Because right now, there is a dead zone between Reinbeck and Red Oak at the foot of the bridge, and they came to the town board to build like a 100-foot-high cell tower with tree branches on it or something, and the town board didn't like the way the fake branches look. I don't know how, you know, these things are necessary. The code's not written for the 22nd century in terms of solar panels, split air conditioning systems, cable, and television, and satellites, you know, there's just so many things that are not... Electric charging stations are not in our code, and people are putting them out there as well, so it's, you know...
We understand completely, we're just here to try to be helpful. The one thing I would leave you with, and I know this isn't an open meeting, you know, I'm just sort of blabbering here, but it is a $350 million private investment in the entire Hudson Valley region that has a choreographed construction timeline.
Right.
And if we don't have some certainty for, and I live in Reinbeck, just about a hundred miles from here, and of course, I would love to have my own service at my house, but if we don't have this in place, we are going to have to substitute a different region, probably New Falls. For, I have scheduled Reinbeck at the first part of the building, and if we don't have this in place, I can't have construction crews sitting around waiting for a hub site to be put in. And so every month that this gets picked, we risk getting this pushed to the back, at which point, I honestly can't say when it would be sucked back into the construction schedule. And I would hate to see that happen. It's not a threat, it is simply just how we organize our construction.
Our hands are tied until we hear from the village attorney and the zoning enforcement officer with an opinion as to what this is and what we can do. And I think we may have to do anything except talk about the aesthetics of it, if it's a utility imperative, so, you know.
I think we can be, obviously, you know, figure that out. So the next meeting, we are on the agenda for, say, we do need some approval.
Comes up, it looks pretty, so people won't object to it, unlike what happened at the town board meeting where it didn't like the fake tree.
Luckily, it's a lot smaller, not my typical...
I can tell you, those 350-foot-tall fake trees look horrible, so I agree.
I agree, but then what do you do, you know, so... Anyway, we should start our meeting, and I appreciate you coming anyway, but hopefully we'll see you in two weeks, and we'll have an answer, and we'll get this resolved.
Great. And if there's any information you need in the vernacular between now and then, we're more than happy to respond.
Absolutely.
Officially, one more lady.
Can I say one more thing before?
Yeah.
Because I wasn't at the last meeting. I'm on the comprehensive plan committee, and they've been looking at this parcel and other parcels for potential rezoning in the future. And because this is undeveloped and next to an office building that's non-conforming, at least now, the tentative decision, and it hasn't been finalized and gone through a public process, it hasn't been voted by the village board, so it's just an idea at this point, or a concept, would be to rezone those two parcels for medical office, a professional office, and residential, so that there be more flexibility on those sites. And so when you think about putting a use on this property, right now, it's kind of unbuildable because it's zoned in the residential district, and it has a lot of water on the front edge. But where you're proposing to put this thing is probably the most buildable portion of this property. And if indeed it gets rezoned in the future, you might regret putting this thing someplace that would obstruct future development on that property. So you might think about that, or talk to the owner, whatever, the farther back in that corner it can go, the more likely...
It's way back.
Well, it's not as far as it could go back in that corner.
I thought we kept it as back as whatever our back line would back.
I think it's something where it'd be set back, I believe.
I think it's like, it's still got quite a bit of setback, just think about that.
We would be more than happy to move it to the farthest back that you'd allow us. Yeah, we're trying, it's a nine-by-15-foot building, so we're more than happy to tuck it wherever you want on that piece of...
Setback's at 10 feet, so...
Yeah, so you could, there is a big tree back there that I wouldn't want to see go away, right, in the corner of that parking lot, but it could go farther back, and the farther it goes back, the more likely it is that that site will be buildable in the future. And the plan looks at the possibility of expanding job opportunities in the village, and that's a thriving building in terms of businesses, so it could potentially be expanded.
Well, we have, you know, it's a hub site for electronics, it is very rarely accessed, you know, it's in our stable network.
Yes.
We, you know, so our goal is invisibility, right? Push it to a place where no one can see it, no one knows it's there, because we're almost never in it.
Yes, and it might, you know, might be better on the corner of that parking lot rather than in the green space of that parcel, for instance. So anyway, I just want to put that on the table because it's under discussion at this point. The plan probably won't be out until, in draft form, until maybe the end of the year, and it'll be adopted until maybe early next year. So I can't promise anything, but that's the tentative plan map at this point in terms of discussion. So it makes, you know, that's not a part property that can't be used in the future for other purposes.
Well, I sincerely hope we are approved and built long before the end of the year.
Yes, okay.
But thank you very much for your time.
I just wanted to throw out that...
Sorry, Buffalo went way into your premium.
That's all. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so I called the Village of Reinbeck Planning Board meeting for September 19, 2023 to order. The first item on the agenda since the arch talk was postponed is John Jackson's Men's Wear Timely Signs for 36, 38 East Market Street, which is near the deli, I mean, you got...
Samuels.
Samuels and the diner.
And Willow.
And Willow.
Willow Wood.
And there's no lighting?
No lighting. There is one change at the request of the client. They were going to move the sign down to its original location, so it was in line with Willow Wood, but at some point during the bracket's history, it got moved up about six or seven inches. I think you can see it in the before, like, you see the existing conditions image yet? It's up higher. I guess there was some interest between, the previously tenant had moved their sign up to improve visibility for Willow Wood, and Mary Bird, I think, had also asked even if he could keep the bracket at its current condition, and it would just mean that the sign is well above the 84-inch limit, it's just going to be a little bit, we're not moving the bracket.
Seven feet is the bottom, seven to 11.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, like, it...
It's always not that high.
It's not high, I mean, it'll be well above the minimum limit. It's just going to appear a little bit tall, you know, higher up on the building, we're just not going to move the bracket.
That says 105 inches, that's eight foot nine inches.
Even at the lowered space, the sign is shorter in height than Willow Wood, so if Willow Wood meets the standard, that one would be higher. It's actually going to probably be 10 feet now, whatever, above the ground, so... There's no, there's nothing, it doesn't break any rules, it's just going to, just leave the bracket there.
You're proposing making the sign higher?
I'm not ma, well...
Than the 105?
We proposed making it lower, because that's what the client wanted after discussion.
Is 105 the lower request?
Yeah, that's the lower number, it's going up, it's going to be more than that.
So it will be higher than is shown on the...
Higher than what is shown, but the bracket is not moving anymore.
In either scenario, the higher the low, it will be higher than the required minimum, but lower than the required maximum?
Yes. I know, just, and perhaps I just should have said nothing, I just put the sign up, but that was just one thing that happened. Between the submission, he had talked to the tenants, the other tenants, and they all agreed that they would prefer to have the sign higher up. It doesn't really make any difference to me, we just don't take the bracket off and move it down.
And Paul, what's the purpose of showing this image with John Jackson, the whole window gray?
Well, because it was a picture of me taking a photo, and it was my reflection in it, so we typically gray that out. We are not, I want it to be well-understood, and probably, I think Ryan warned me that this was going to happen, am I sure of sending it up?
Ryan knows this.
Essentially, we're not graying out that window, it is a storefront, it will have merchandise in the window. We just did that because there were a lot of reflections from the sun, and it would have been very difficult to discern the size and scale of the lettering with the reflections in the image, so we're graying it out.
I just wondered if you were suggesting, in addition to the bracket, which is here, a window decal, and you're not?
No, we are, we are, it's just it's going to be on clear glass.
All right, so you're suggesting the bracketed sign and the window decal?
Yep. Yeah, there's two, he's allowed to have two signs, and they both fit within the square footage allowance. Can you go back to that picture before we move away?
There is a light socket right up here that lights Willow Wood, and we don't encourage those sort of spotlights anymore. And there's an empty socket here that was designed to light up your sign, or this proposed sign.
Okay.
So we should make it clear that that socket is not going to be activated in the future and turned into a spotlight, which we wouldn't approve.
Okay, can you just put that in the resolution? I'll just let them know not to put a wall in there.
We allow lit signs, but they have to be sort of goosened in.
Yeah, I doubt that was ever brought before the warrants for approval, I think it was just kind of copped together at some point.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. So we can allow unshielded sign, if they want to do.
So then the hanging bracket sign is this one, and the window decal is this one, totaling 5.98, which leaves actually .02 instead of .2, but close enough.
Either way, not amount to do a third sign.
Uh-huh, okay.
I have a motion to approve the sign for John Jackson's Men's Wear, 38 East Market Street, with the condition, would you like to make it?
Yes, I'll make a motion. With the condition that there's no lighting unless approved by the planning board.
Second, Jeff.
Oh, who's in favor?
I.
Aye. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda is another HVAC mini-split system at 60 North Parson Street. Is this built already, or?
Yes.
Do you want to come and sit up here, so we can see and speak?
So the person from Reichor is supposed to come, but she didn't, he didn't come.
I have a very short agenda tonight.
Yeah, so, anyway.
So the mini... Can I explain the situation?
Sure.
From my standpoint, so I contracted Reichor, you know, put this mini-split system in, get rid of our oil burner and all that stuff. And they said that they would apply for the permit, and they did everything, you know, and I just assumed that everything was going to just go smoothly, and then I found out afterwards, when the whole thing is put up, that there was a problem, which I didn't anticipate, partially because the house adjacent to us had mini-splits put in just months earlier, and the house across the street had mini-splits put in the year before. And I talk to these people all the time, nobody ever said anything about there being a problem with the planning board.
Okay, Paul, just once again, so Brian, they applied for a permit, but would they issue a permit?
No, no, not, Reichor did the installation without a permit, without coming to us.
They did apply for a permit.
They did apply for a permit application.
This is the thing that they told me, I mean, they're not here, but I was told that they applied for the permit, and they look, you know, when they do it, they look at on the website, and there was no indication on the website that this particular home was in a historic district, which, now, I knew we were in a historic district, but I think that was like determined last year at some point, right?
Recently.
It was recently, but it was...
Very recently.
It was very recently?
Yes.
Like, months?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So I remember them talking about it, like, at least a year, a year and a half ago, saying that it was probably going to become a part of the historic district, and we were happy about it, for whatever reasons. But, so, when I applied, I assumed that Reichor, since they do so many of these, and they do them all the time, that they knew the ropes, you know, and then when they applied for the permit, you know, it would be approved and they would go forward. I assumed that when they went forward, that the apartment had already been approved, I didn't even ask, you know. They came, they did the whole job in one day, and they do it in like six hours, you know. So they told me, though, that when they looked at the website, there was no indication that, on the website, that this was in historic district, so they assumed it was just going to be a routine installation of HVAC system, you know. So that was the problem on their end, and the problem on my end is I just, just, you know, assumed that they were going to take care of all things.
So there's one in the back and four on the side?
There's one in the back, right, and there's four on the side, now...
Maybe seen from the street outside.
Okay, so I've taken photographs, I just sent you one, this is the most recent one. Now, what I'm going to do, like, the photograph that you have there is old, that's like the original photograph, an original photograph. A lot of those bushes have already been taken down, because we cleaned up all those burbery.
The house is now white?
It's not white, it's yellow.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the right color.
Okay, I actually have, I swung by there today and took some photos.
Okay, and that's where the...
So this is the left side of the house, and these are the four that are installed.
Right, exactly.
One, two, three, four.
And there's one in the back, yeah.
And there's one in the back.
Now, I just sent Ryan a photograph of...
I don't have access to it, I didn't help with it.
Okay, I can show it to you on my phone, but I planned, I'm going to do plantings for screenings, it's going to be decided. So I already put one of these trees in, it's supposed to, it can possibly grow 50 feet, but hopefully it will. It's one of those, I love what they call them, it's like a, it's like a pine, it's like a soft pine evergreen kind of thing. And then adjacent to that, I put a holly bush, which is, is a growth, a holly bush?
Are you, are you talking about on the side of the house?
Right, yeah, right on the side.
Right, the right side, the other side, okay.
One about here and one about there, right?
There, I touched the bench.
I was out there today, he was planting.
This was taken today from the sidewalk, you can see, here's a tree here. Standing on the sidewalk, that's what it looks like.
This is more recent, because you came by, you swam by a little earlier.
Oh.
After.
Yeah. I already planted this, I already planted this, and then the other. Then right now, they're small, and they're going to grow.
That's like a cedar?
Yeah, it's really nice, I'm going to get two more, but I'm going to put them right along the edge there, and...
The other is always with the, you know, the channels for the tubing.
Yeah.
That one's in the front, do they have the paint, that color of the house, that there could be a little covered up, so you wouldn't see it?
Yeah, I'm going to paint the house.
The same color, it makes it a little less...
Yeah, 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 I have that house.
Those are almost more issued than mini-split systems, they were right up the front of the building, or I can't see it from...
Yeah, well, we, when we first had a town, we were going to do screening anyway, because, you know. I didn't think it liked the way they looked, but like I said, like, right next door to us, they had, they had an HVAC system put in, I actually picked pictures of it.
Oh, okay.
It's actually kind of nicer.
What do you call it?
They had like... So they had these... Here's the artwork here.
It's just the Google.
They're fairly old, and they were put in before this...
These were done just a couple of months earlier, but they're the Bosch, the Bosch ones, they're lower. The Bosch, yeah, really kind of nice. They're more expensive, but they're nice, but they're on the ground, and so we just, you know, they didn't plant anything yet, they were allowing the stuff to grow. But across the street, I don't feel like, I feel like I'm telling on these people, they put these in last year, I guess it wasn't historic.
Was it?
Yeah, so they, I think, white against gray, you know, and their, you know, their HVAC system. So, you know, we didn't have any idea that there was going to be a problem at all, you know. And I guess Reichor should have, they should have not gone forward until the permit was approved, I guess, and I didn't know anything about that. But as I said, we're going to do screening anyway, so we'll screen it out really nicely.
So these are the photos from Reichor that Ryan's...
Yeah, that's after they put a mess, I took out, that air conditioner is out.
And you can see that the line set is covered and appears to be painted the color of the house.
Is it?
Whereas this, these line sets are not covered.
Right.
Let's go down.
Right, those are, I don't know if they can cover those, the brown, the black ones, if they can, and you want them to, I'll ask them to come by and do it.
Well, if they run them along the base, you know, the bottom of the siding, you know, they're not...
And if they could be painted?
If they could be painted, less than the big covers, which make it twice as large, you know.
So what would you prefer? I mean, you don't like the black wire.
If I could, if I could just mention three things, Mr. Frank. Number one, to confirm, this is not, these are not in the setback, right? Number one. Number two, that they're shielded from view from the street, and you said that you made plantings...
I just started.
To do so. And number three, that the line sets are covered with line set covers that are painted to match the color of the house, so that they fade away, and they don't look like a bunch of temporary wires from the street.
Right.
Those are generally the three things we see.
So those, so those black wires, those should be covered, you think?
They can cover them, because I had my cards too much.
Yeah, they'll come and do it if I ask them to, I'm sure.
It's the same thing that's under the verticals?
Yeah, I don't know why they did it, yeah, strange.
It's cheaper.
It wasn't cheap.
It was like $30,000. For the long time, that's a damp area, or a sun area, and, you know, the covering is there to protect them.
Yeah.
The rain from the heat, and the water from the ice.
I thought it was like a different kind of wire, it's like the ones that would go into the house were different than those.
It's just covered.
The block is just a foam, it's an insulation, so the line is a plastic cover.
So I'll ask them to come and put the...
All that we're trying to do is say, if you're going to put these in,
Yeah.
then we'd like them on the back or the side of the building, we'd like one person put it in,
Yeah.
and ran the line set up, and then all the way to the back, they could have run it along the baseboard and then gone up in the back of the house.
The way this house was, you see, the problem with this house, the back part of the house is an addition. It wasn't part of the original house, and so the way the house is divided, you couldn't put all the splits in the back, you know, to get the proper... Because this is going to be for heating also and cooling.
We understand that, you know, so we're just trying to pay attention now to these split systems, which have exploded all over the village, and try to...
Which is really a good thing.
Raise, but, yeah, well, it's better than the window units, but try to raise, I just walked this out, we have like eight window units hanging out.
But aside from that, window units, it's better than having oil, burning oil, you know? It really is, I mean, especially if you, I mean, we would like, we would have liked to get solar panels, but we can't, because we have too many trees. But we can get, you know, like, community solar, you know, so that's also helps, you know, environmentally, and these, you know, so that's our little way of pitching in, you know.
So that's all we're trying to do, is like have, have the zoning enforcement officer look at these applications,
Yeah.
and then, and he suggests to come to the planning board, it was in the historic district, and say, "Try to be sensitive," that's a nice building, if you know what to do.
Okay, very good, yeah, I mean, it seems as though that it should be put on the website or something, so that people, like, companies that look at it would, would know that they would have to...
I think you're getting adjustments, what my issue is right there, and that is, sort of regardless of whether it appears to be or not appears to be in the historic district, I think that the problem here is that the contractor proceeded without a permit, the permit is the check, the official check.
And they're, they're in a hurry, the company. And they're, 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 they're in a hurry, the company, they, they just...
Anybody doing anything in the village should check with the building department and not just check the website.
Permit before.
To see if they need a permit.
Yeah, well, they did apply for a permit, but they, they didn't wait till they got it.
Right.
They assumed, they assumed that they were gonna get the permit.
One question I have about the cedar tree, you say is gonna get really large?
Uh, yes, well, no, I, you know, they say they can grow up to 50 feet, I don't think it will.
It certainly looks like it's planted too close to the house to be a, a big tree. And a holly bush provides better screening than that cedar, 'cause once a cedar gets high, it starts losing its branches on the lower end or can lose it. And you can see underneath it. So, while they're fresh in the ground, you might think about moving that tree a little farther out and putting the holly as the screening in, because holly get really thick and...
Yeah, they don't really, they don't, like, we, we have a holly in the front part of the yard. It never grew that high.
Yeah, it only has to be six, eight feet high to get the screening.
But this one's only about maybe three or four feet and hasn't really grown much. So, so that's why, I was, my wife wanted the holly. She said that holly would be good. I said, well, look how low they are. But we did it anyway, 'cause then when we looked at the thing, it said it goes up to six feet. That would be perfect for that particular spot. And I like them 'cause they're bushier and, you know, again. But I, I don't know about the cedar growing 50 feet, I don't know about that, you know? They usually die before they grow.
I don't know, there's cedar on that, um...
A lot of people grow this.
At the corner of Beach and, um, East Market Street, that big house with the side yard. They put some cedar trees around that and they're already about 20 feet high. It's amazing.
There's a cedar tree in front of my house, it's very old. I had to, that's at least 30 or 40 feet high.
Is it, is it a cedar or a cypress? I didn't see the photo.
He said it's cedar. I have, I actually have the, uh...
At that corner.
I have the, uh, the car for it.
They got really big.
That's a big fast.
And would they provide screening permanently or do they start losing their branches and go too high up?
Who do you call? This is called, I'll tell you, Green Giant.
Those are providing.
Okay, well, they'll, they'll grow to the ground.
They'll stand in the ground.
Yeah, okay.
They'll be fine.
All right.
I'm gonna, I wanna, I wanna get two more of these and, um, put them on the side. I, I, what I wanted to do was, um, we have like hibiscus on the other side, which separates two properties, and they're really beautiful 'cause of flowers. But they're growing like all over the place, like they're coming up, you know? So I was telling her, and she just like, she just says, just leave them there, leave them, I'm trying to mow, you know? And I, and they're like growing. I say, I can't mow, I don't know, I can't identify them, you know? So, um, so I'm saying, well, maybe just dig them up and use them as screening, you know? And then she said, well, in the winter, the leaves, you know, fall off and, you know, they won't be fine. So these are better 'cause in the winter they stay.
So you get the idea, we just want something permanently to screen those from the sidewalk.
Yeah, okay.
But no fencing, when?
Yeah, I don't wanna do fencing.
You don't wanna do fencing.
Well, we're thinking of like razor wire, isn't it? After listening to that, I said, no, no.
Well, Jeff, to your list of three things, I think there is a four that would probably apply here if we did have the chance to look at this. And that, that first unit is pretty close to the corner of the house. You know, right on the edge of the porch there, um, almost to where it might be a distraction to you outside on the porch, certainly at that one window. But, you know, had this come to us, I, you know, I think we would have encouraged them to put those units more towards...
Push back a little bit and run the line sets back to them. Because if people are doing a total renovation...
I don't know if they could move them down.
No, probably not.
'Cause the way it's set up, they probably could, but...
They, they probably could.
'Cause they, they, they did that whole thing in like six hours. But when they do it, they bring like, you know, 15 people. Took out the oil tank, they took out the old oil burner. It was good.
But we, we encourage people, if you're doing a real internal renovation, to try to, you know, run the wires through, through the ceiling, through the walls where they can be, you know, um, not outside the building. And people have done that.
Oh, yeah?
We had a place on South Street that was gonna rip up one side of the building and put in a bathroom and then renovate the garage. I said, good, you can hide the line sets in the garage and in the bathroom without them being on the front of the building.
Yeah.
And she did a nice job putting them on the side of the building, the outside unit. So, it's a challenge and we need, we need, you're working on the, um, comp plan committee. Are they addressing these 20 or not?
Yeah.
'Cause I, I see these all over town, I mean, I don't know if they're all in the historic district.
Well, we had somebody that came before us and did an inventory and showed 75 mini splits around the town. And I asked, how many of these got a permit? And I was told maybe a third.
A permit to just do it? To put them in at all?
Yes, you have to.
Yeah, and they didn't give them?
Historic district.
Oh, in historic, no.
Would need a permit anyway.
Need a permit to my wife.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that you would need a permit to do a job like that anyway. And they did, they told me, I paid for it. I mean, it's part of the, it's on like bill, a permit, you know, a applied for it. And they said that, um, I guess for this, they're sending, they send you $75, which you receive, which is for the permit, but it's, it's still there. It's still in...
It's for tonight's application.
That's what we're talking about here.
Michael, to that point though, the permits relatively new. The mechanical permit is something new to the village, right, Ryan? It's only been...
For the, for the most part, especially when you have it broken down to whether you're dealing with existing ductwork or they're putting in ductwork or they're putting in a whole new system like this. Um, and sometimes just the heat pump, it isn't the AC. Or if it's both, um, it is fairly new to contractors and to homeowners that they have to pull a building per, permit for the work to be done.
So some of those 73 might be pre-permit days and now the rest we're trying to catch up with.
Yeah.
Certainly, any review that comes in requires one.
All right, so there's no more questions. I have a motion to approve the, uh, mini split systems for 60 North Parsonage Street.
Um, and, and have you agreed to have RICOR install the line set covers and paint them the same color?
Well, I'm gonna have to call them in the morning. I'm sure they'll do it.
Which I think should be part of the motion.
Why don't you make the motion and put it as a condition?
Motion to, to approve the previously installed without a permit, um, heat, heat pumps, external heat pumps, with the condition that all of the line sets have line set covers that are painted the same color as the house exterior.
And that there's arbor vining and holly planted so that you can't see the units with the sidewalk?
And screenings, like, plants greeted.
To feel the view from the sidewalk and the street.
Yeah, well, that would be the way they went.
I'll second.
Who's in favor?
I.
All right, good luck.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
See, um, we went with David Gordon to talk about, he said Emily's working on the code of the comp plan committee. We discovered a lot of weaknesses with A-10 Chestnut Street. David knows what they all are. I would like to see something put in the code, in the updated code that talks about mini splits, about the line set covers, about if you're in the historic district, you have to get a permit no matter what, but you have to come to the planning board. If you're not, you just get a permit. Do we give guidelines to the zoning enforcement officer to approve the permit and make suggestions? We want them further back from the street, we want the line sets painted the same, et cetera, et cetera. How do we get this into zoning, zoning enforcement officer? How do we get this into these revisions in the code? Maybe the whole village should have requirement there.
Yeah, I mean, like my suggestion on sort of pop-up suggestions like this is Miranda or Ryan, like, you know, just keep a list, 'cause you guys think about this stuff all the time and like sometimes these ideas come up one or two at a time in the planning board meeting. If you're just keeping, if we can just have a running list of what you wanna make sure that will be included in the next zoning code update, great. Um, but in order for it to get into the next zoning code update, it needs to be written down. We need to talk to someone about it, you know, like, you know? Sure, I can make sure that's in the next zoning code update, but it would be really helpful if it sort of came from the planning board of, over the course of the past few years, we've recognized these deficiencies in the zoning code. Would you please make sure to take into account X, Y, Z, A, B, C as you're thinking about the next zoning code update? 'Cause once the comp plan itself is done and approved and recommended and then approved, um, we're then gonna start on the zoning code update and that's gonna be a joint effort between Michelle, Greg, who's been working on the plan, as well as our lawyers. And ideally, any thoughts, comments, concerns about the planning board and the zoning board have as well as Ken, you know, like, the, the next zoning code update is gonna be a sizable one. Um, and so just keeping track of all of your ideas in advance of it would be incredibly helpful for that.
And you guys know, it, it comes to you guys too.
Yeah, so it would be great if like your ideas go into it before, you know?
I can't imagine that we wanna wait until...
Yeah.
A draft of that. And the zoning is completed, that could be a year and, or more.
Well, on the HVAC issue?
Yeah, can't, can't that just be adopted as part of the building practices? That in historic district, you're advised to do this?
To modify the code.
I mean, if we're doing anything to the zoning code, it has to be zoning change.
I don't see why it has to be in the zoning code, is what I'm saying.
Would you want us to refer to it by executive order? I don't think we have that authority.
So... No, I would just say, in, in the building department website and in literature, it says, if you're in the historic, you have to go to the planning board and you're advised to...
I mean, we can figure out a way to make that more clear on the website of the...
I think what has to be made more clear is the new map. You guys gotta understand, with this specific case, 60 North Parsonage is part of the new boundary line that was just approved in...
June.
June, so two months ago. So you have a whole new streets and village residents that may not have any clue that they are part of the historic district overlay. And whether or not RICOR looked on the website or not, it, it has to be determined if...
I mean, it seems like RICOR didn't make huge arrangements, it doesn't matter a lot, so...
Right, the process works, they just didn't follow it.
And this is the second, and, and to be fully transparent, this is the second time that they've done this.
What, like for a print, then goes in before?
Yeah, the first time was over on Livingston Street.
Well, I mean, this is a couple of times since I've been on the board that situations like this have come up where homeowners have come in to apologize because their contractor did something that they know they shouldn't have done.
Unfortunately, contract, a new homeowner, the village of Rymick does not know anything about the code and the rules and the regulations. The real estate brokers do, the contractors do, but sometimes they wanna make a sale.
I mean, we can send out a letter to...
I'm talking about like the fence that was built too high by a fence contractor who's built...
Is there any duty to charge as these individual...
Right, 'cause the homeowners are coming in to apologize for their contractor. And that's, that's my point, that this gentleman tonight, his contractor wasn't here to, to, to stand up for what they had done wrong. The person with the fence, their contractor didn't come in to talk about what they had done wrong or to hear from the board where they screwed up. And it'll just happen again and someone else will be in here for the same situation. So, the process works, but what, you know, the contractor's not feeling the process in any way.
So I've had a conversation with Justin and one path forward is that RICOR is notified via a letter and an affidavit of understanding that moving forward, that, you know, before anything is gonna be issued, permits are gonna be, you know, going over with a fine-tooth comb and that you guys can't just go ahead and do, do this without having a signed per, permit to justify the installation. Another path forward is in our fee schedule. You build something without a permit, it's $300. That's up to Ken to enforce that along with Justin, 'cause he's the building inspector, so he needs to make the call 'cause he's gonna be told Thursday that this received planning board approval. So, do you wanna issue the permit? Or do you want to get 300? And then, the permit gets issued. That's up, that's up to him.
I'd be in favor of doing like that. You said the homeowner could take that back to the contractor and say, you know, I need to take $300 off the invoice because you were in charge of permitting and you didn't get the proper permit. And then maybe at some point after two or three times, the contractor will pay more attention to whether they've received the permit or not.
I mean, Ken could even go a step further and enforce that RICOR is, is responsible for the 300.
Can we extend this to the whole village? They have to come for a permit inside or outside historic district. Can we say, when you do this work, for the sake of the look of the entire village, we're suggesting or asking or whatever that they put on the side of the building further back from the street view, painted the same color? Can we ask that or can Ken ask that when they come in for the permit? These are requirements?
Yeah, we can make a suggestion.
We could probably put a guidance document, like best practices.
Yeah, these are the things we'd like, when anybody comes into a mini split permit. Not just, they all have to get the fee, they only have to come to the planning board of the historic district, but at least Ken would have the guidelines for the non-historic district, 'cause it's still the look of the building. And buildings 10, 20 years from now, after we're all gone, they might wanna expand historic district again, 'cause 50 years will move forward, 20 or 30 years. So, then you don't want these houses that look, you know, so...
If you don't wanna pull the other sort of a list of best practices when it comes to the mini splits, sure, I see no reason why, you know, Ken and Justin and Ryan and team, you know, can't hand that document out with the permit, but it can't be a requirement unless we change the zoning code.
Right.
So, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think it could be made a recommendation on the building code site and building permit site, and then they would know that if they're coming now, it's gonna stick effective.
Sure, yeah.
And then when the zoning comes out, we can actually put it in black and white.
But we want this.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't see why we should wait.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree, and getting back to, I guess, my point, or, or David's point, should apply, I think, to the whole village. In other words, the, the recommendation should apply to the whole village. I forget, it's either on Beach or North Parsonage. If you walk up there on the eastern side of the street, there's a house that put a reasonably large heat pump hanging on the front of the house. Dead center. There's nothing else in there. Um, so I'm in favor of come up with some guidelines, recommendations, that say, this is what we expect. And, um, if you're in the, village-wide, and if you're in the historic district, it's subject to planning board review. Because even if we don't, even if we're not able to change the paragraphs or the sentences in the, in the code quickly, there's, there's sufficient code in the historic district overlay about appearances and impact on the neighborhood that would support us to enforce, I believe. Uh, no, you know, this, we know it's a recommendation that you don't do this, but what you're proposing is an impact on the appearance in the neighborhood and we want you to comply with the recommendation.
Most people should want the house to look good, but some people are not aware, but are not sensitive to things like that. And, uh, we have to, uh...
Well, they get, they get companies like this that go and sell them, you know? Well, they get companies like this that go and sell them, you know, here's the cheapest way to do it. They're not hanging off the front of the house and they're going to punch a hole, and it's going to go right into your living.
It was one of the first minisplits and, you know, I forget his name. The priest came in and said, well, we're going to do right up the front of the building, on either side of the stained glass windows. And I said, well, why are you doing that? Well, the contractor said that's the way to do it. Now, obviously, he didn't care about architecture, but we had to work with them and say no, you know, and they moved units on the side, you couldn't see them. So, we have to, who could.
So if I could make a suggestion then, would it be okay if I just wrote, drafted a recommendation list, sent it out to everybody, we could review it.
That would be great.
Get feedback from everyone. I won't be able to do it this week, but next week for sure. And then we can massage that, and it would be something that Ken could have in his toolkit to work with once we're all happy with it.
And we could also put that on the building, you know, the building department website.
Sure, that'd be great.
Want to install a, you know, a minisplit system, like, you know, consider these regulations to build.
Split on two levels too, because one, it educates the homeowner, so that when their contractor tells them, no, we can't do that, they suggest that you consider that as an option, it must be feasible. And then two, it's sort of, you want to be very successful with the planning board, you might want to follow this guidance document and have more of these boxes checked rather than less. So hopefully they come in a little more queued up for success.
Because a decade ago, I was worried that solar panels would ruin the look of the village, but thanks to the hard work of the tree commissioner, people really can't put up solar panels anywhere in the village. And so there's very few, only a couple of examples, that the stockbroker behind Terrapin and stuff that have actually solar panels on their roof, so that was a fear, but now the split systems are just.
Would you like us to send out some kind of notification to the property owners in the expanded district to let them know that they're in the expanded district? Would that be helpful for what?
Well, a year or two ago, they got a letter from Albany, and they got a letter from Washington DC saying, congratulations, you're on the national historic register. I don't know if you know what that means.
Yeah, it didn't mean anything, I mean, like, we can now say, now you're on the, we've expanded it to the village and this, that and the other. Now your house is subject to X, Y, and Z, you know. It might make people's heads explode more than inform them, but, you know, more information is always better than less.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a good idea.
I agree with you guys on that.
And you're going to have to make the distinction as to which are in the local historic district and which are in the national register.
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
And just to close this issue, Ryan, I think you said that Ken would send a letter to RICOR.
RICOR's, there's going to be correspondence with RICOR.
Good.
Because this.
This isn't the first time we've gone through this.
This practice has to stop. I mean, I don't know if there's a miscommunication between their office and then their actual personnel in the field. I don't know where the boat is being missed, but somehow the boat is being missed. And, you know, you can only fall on the sword so many times, so.
It would be nice if there was some enforcement action there.
They're very might-well me.
Could you like, Ken, know that from me?
Sure.
Yes. Thank you.
As David pointed out, with a 10, just not there were a lot of weaknesses in the code in terms of enforcement penalties and things, that we want to really, we didn't expect anything like this to beep up the code. To do it, so we'll work on that, as John said, sooner than, well, we have to, you have to have, you have to change the code if we're going to go. I had RICOR do mine, the end of April, and I had one guy that said, this is the way we can do it. And he couldn't get it into my bedroom in the front, because it's the bedroom. And I was saying, I'm on the planning board, this is expanded historic district, we can't have anything that's going to be visible from the street. Then they called back and said, we want to reconfigure, they sent another guy, and he went around with me and he goes, I think I can run the lines up the back into your attic and then down from that way. And then all of a sudden, it's like, yes, my bedroom is now air-conditioned for the first time. And it was like, and then the third group, when seven of them showed up and put them in, and because I was there, I had building experience, I know every square inch of the house, I could go around and can you get it here, can you get it there, can you hide it here? And they were very appreciative of all the things that I was doing to help them. But if you have somebody that doesn't, then their, you know, their worker is going to say, this is the easiest. And the guy that's first come to me and then the second guy, isn't the ones that show up with, you know, when they're actually installing it, it's a big outfit, but, you know. I told them and they were very appreciative of the insights I were giving them, but, you know, it's like, stop with me.
I mean, you all may know more about this more, but I've also learned that with these new heat pump systems, you can't actually have inducted systems. So like, all of these eight systems that are popping up outside of people's houses, it's not that much more expensive to get one and then duct it. And so like, that's also a possibility to encourage folks to consider, you know.
You can put a larger unit in the back and you can go across the attic and drop it into each of four bedrooms.
Right.
You know, with a bigger unit, it's really, you know, probably even cheaper.
Sort of though, Lydia, I mean, inductive systems aren't any different than the wall cassettes. You can, you have the outdoor unit and you have the indoor unit, and they can be big, they can be small, depending on the space they're serving. And in some cases, multiple indoor pieces can connect to the same outdoor piece, but not in all cases. And it's not a matter of whether it's ducted or not, but the issue, and Michael pointed it out last meeting, is you want a little bit of redundancy in your system too. So if you have a failure in your outdoor unit and your entire house depends on it, you really have nothing else. So, there's a happy medium between five and one.
Right.
Yes, to your point, you can do fewer outdoor units, but ducted isn't the like, isn't the only way to do it. So it is something that in our document, we can push for fewer outdoor units, but we probably shouldn't suggest just one.
Well, yeah, totally, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that the village is newer here. And a lot of places in the country, the houses are newer, and our houses are very old. And if you have a furnace that blows hot air around the house, it'd take five minutes for somebody to come in there and put an air conditioner in that gets put into the system and blow cold air in the summer. But we don't have, we have old buildings.
With tiny rooms, thousands of tiny rooms.
So it requires a lot more cleverness, like Michael had did with it, to really make the efforts happen to do it. You know. I'd love to do it in my own corner. Where would you put anything, you know? Maybe something in the back and it coming through the attic, which is one way to do it, but it just isn't, you know, isn't working.
On a related topic, Ryan, what's the status of the affidavit that we gave some edits to, the one that gets signed by the contractor and the homeowner after they come to the planning board to certify that they understand they have to comply?
So I know David Gordon was working on that, and then I have a hunch that what has developed with our other situation has sort of grasped his full attention.
Got it.
Now, so it's something, just a probably reminder of, can you look back at that document and see how it can be strengthened? That's, that would be my guess.
Got it.
Do we have any minutes? Not yet. Anything else?
I had a couple things on my walks around the village that I noticed that I think deserve some attention.
Okay.
Remember that guy who came in and wanted to put the charging station in the front yard?
I was talking today about it, it's up.
Yeah, he put it in the bushes where we told him he couldn't, and he's charging his car in the front yard like he. So.
Well, that's a violation.
Charging stations, minisplits isn't on the code. I mean.
The only difference is he put it like this far off the ground behind a bush, rather than on a post higher up, which is what he originally proposed, but it's in the same spot that he proposed and he said no to. So that's one thing I noticed. The other thing is, if you go to the pavilion behind Terrapin, they put in plastic windshields.
I saw that.
Roll-down plastic shields to, I assume, keep the heat in in the winter time, or in the fall season at least. And they're plastic, and we spent so much time making that building look historic or consistent with historic district, and they've gone out and now put in, both on the front and on the sides and probably on the back, these roll-down plastic shields that look terrible. Now, maybe, you know, if they had put them on the inside, we could live with them.
How am I supposed to be at Terrapin, John? How am I supposed to be at Terrapin, you know? I'll have to go in with a fake nose and a baseball cap or something, or something, because.
We spent a lot of time with Terrapin, they did right.
It's a beautiful building.
And it looked great, and all of a sudden I saw them putting this thing up. And I know we had plastic shields, yeah.
Are they carbonated?
Yeah, and you could see them, I just saw them come home helplessly yesterday. And said, what's that? See the pictures?
It's a nice BMW with a plug-in.
Can you email me those, John, so I can give them to Justin?
The big plastic shades.
Yeah, they covered this one, but the ones on the side, they didn't cover the rollers. And they're full plastic on a historic site.
And if you, I guess they want to extend it till November or December, if they put heaters.
Yeah.
If you're allowed to have a heater inside, which kind of scares me, try to heat that place.
Well.
And then it becomes a four-season expansion of the building.
Yeah, like cinnamon.
At least they're, tent is in plastic.
Well, so two items, one of them, installing something we spoke about at length and was clear that would not be allowed, got done in violation of what was agreed.
Yeah.
So they're in violation, so.
Unless he went to the.
He, well, the first gentleman on Livingston Street is going to get a letter from Justin saying he's going to have to come back to us, or he's going to have to go to the ZBA. And then for Mr. Groner, he'll have to come back.
I think so. And what would be the code that would apply to?
I mean, I'm not Justin, but off the top of my head, it's Letter C. It's Letter C in Section 39, he's made an improvement to something that was not previously approved under site plan.
Is it supposed to be temporary?
What else you got, John?
Boy, he's not going to let you think, so think of something else.
We missed you last time.
What's going on with Unlimited Tomorrow or Plantings? Didn't we give them a deadline of about now to put their trees in?
So I spoke with their rep, the landscaper and everything that they ordered, they couldn't find. There was no inventory anywhere to find what they want to find. So, they're trying to look for a tree species that they can plant in the fall and the winter that's not going to die, but that's going to obviously blossom or bloom in the springtime. And then they're going to be applying for a site work permit to alter the driveway.
Kind of have to call BS on that. 100%. Everything you just said.
I can only just tell you.
Having purchased truckloads of trees recently and planted them and have plantings planned for the coming weeks.
This is time to plant. October's the full planting season. And they have, you know.
Tree commission goes theirs, I think, the first week in November.
Yep, that's the time to plant.
It's the time to buy now, they're all on sale.
And they're all on sale, they're 50% off at the Phantom.
I don't, I don't think it's a reluctance of the rep, I think it's the reluctance of the individual who writes the checks.
Yeah, is that property still for sale, I think, right?
Supposedly. And now there's this whole, we're on the rack, so.
I also found a version of the site plan for the COE, and they were indeed supposed to have three street trees across the frontage. And they never planted, but that's water under the bridge too, until they get.
Well, it might not be, John, because with Unlimited Tomorrow gone, they might be coming back.
Yeah, well, whoever buys it might.
Well, there's, there's ideas floating around that COE might expand into that building. So there may be an opportunity, yes.
Oh, all right.
There may be an opportunity to.
Planning on both sites.
Yes.
Get the driveway fixed.
Also, technically, they're in violation of the site plan even if it's been 10 years, so we can still enforce on that.
Yeah.
And I think that's for rid.
It's just clear that we somehow have to have more boots on the ground if, as the gentleman said, in six hours they did it. It's not like someone's going to start digging a hole to put up a garage or accessory structure. People are going to see that and say, hey, what's going on over there? This thing opened back in a day. At lunchtime, I walked up past this building and there was like the Panama Canal on East Market Street, and coming back tonight, it's gone, so, you know, things happen very quickly.
Even with a full-time building inspector, there's no, or a zoning inspector, even in cities that have 50 people who work for their offices, they can't catch everything. And so, you know, yes, having more boots on the ground, but even, we noticed that we saw it today. Jeff took pictures this morning, and by this afternoon, it was different. So, you know, on this stuff, we just, it needs to be brought to the attention, and then the site plan needs to be dug up by staff, and then Justin has to enforce. It's like, it's just the process that we then have to go through.
If I was to walk around the village a lot and see things and call Ryan, where did this come from? And Ryan would say, you guys approved that six months ago, they just got around to doing it. Right, I remember that. But sometimes that, no, like, that's not true, you know.
Yeah, the zoning board does it, I do it, I mean, you know, a lot of people are dropping dyes on everybody that's in this village.
Wow.
Well, it's, people just move, and it's a contractor's real estate, but sure you can do that when you buy the house. Buy it, sign here, and you can do that. And then they said, we're going to get somebody to do it, and I'm going to do that, I'm told you could do that, and then it's like, you know, so protecting the village is a challenge.
Any word on the department store?
The brick roof?
Yeah, the fake brick roof.
Uh, Ken is probably still trying to find who we can contact from T-Mobile.
And, what was it, I was talking with Ryan, the, whatever it's called, the new affordable housing, the 80 units crossing the Star Library.
Little town.
We had asked for, to be an interested party, I don't know if that's.
The town knows about it.
The town knows about it.
Yeah, and they didn't seem to have an opposition to it.
No, because the village board is also asked to be an interested party on that one.
Because we're concerned about.
Involved because of the SOR?
Involved, yes, sort of.
Yeah, I mean, you have to give a SOR permit in order for the connection, right?
We do, whether that makes us an involved agency for all of the other stuff. You know, it's always good to dot I's and cross T's when it comes to the town board.
Because I was concerned the entrance and exit is on that hill.
DOT is, just so you know, DOT is all over.
I said, DOT is never going to approve something like this, they're going to have to come out on the flat part, like somehow like the town highway department, down low. They come over that hill.
Around that corner.
Around that corner, up that hill at 90 miles an hour before they get to the star. And then to have, there's a sidewalk to the library on that side, there's no sidewalk until you get past the the Calder House, everybody knows it. And so they've got to walk up that side, because they can't cross that street to get to the library sidewalk, because they'll be killed. So there are concerns that we have, that's why we want to be an interested party.
Yeah, right, yeah, they know.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Right, you look at some of the plans for October 3rd, read them over, and.
Is that a public hearing on the 3rd?
Well, we have to vote if we're going to have a public hearing. They're saying, oh, you don't read a public hearing. That's not for you to decide, we're going to have, we'll probably, we'll poll everybody during a public hearing, but I think we're pretty much in favor of going to a public hearing to get some input in the public about what happened. The public's quite upset.
Well, we're going to determine completeness of application at the 3rd to then schedule a public hearing for the following meeting, right? So if what we've received is adequate, we could consider doing that? And if not, we would make suggestions for what's missing?
And we have questions, we have to look back over what was approved, and as you pointed out before, that they're, they were supposed to save the windows, put back the windows, but, and they're putting in brand-new windows, which is going to cover wherever the trim and all the stuff, it's, how's it going to fit back on top of that? I don't know.
I will be here for the second meeting in October. I'm out of town, so, just advance warning.
Well, the big meeting is, I guess it's just like two or three items. The big issue on the 3rd will be this. We have a lot to talk about.
We started work today over there.
They had an amendment that simply gave approval to builders.
He said it would take a couple of weeks if we.
He said three weeks from when he started, so that time's perfect.
He said it'd take a few weeks to get the people together to close it up. With the windows. You know, I said, people on the corner of Platt and Mulberry, they just had a big green box. And they didn't cut the holes open until the windows arrived. So why'd you cut all the window openings? So why'd you cut all the window openings?" "Well, we did, and now it's, you know, places penetrate, you can't close it up. Let's put the windows in." So Ken, you know, we had this debate, we said, "Well, we don't want to be zoning enforcement officer." You have a definition of securing the property, which is in the code. And so Ken's letting them put up the green wood and put up whatever window they want. So they'll do the security, nothing else. So...
All right.
See you on the 3rd, have a nap.
Wait a minute.
What?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, sorry.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, is it, babe?
Bye.
Sorry, guys.
See you tomorrow.